Now called in March sixteenth, two thousand and ten, meeting the order. Call on Mr. Johnson for prayer and deny invocation.
Folks, this evening, we'd like to take just a moment if we could all bow our heads in silence and remember the Godfrey Williams family. As you can see, we have a flower here placed in his memory this evening. We would like to take a moment to remember those folks, if you would, and then I'll close with prayer. Father, we just come to you this evening. We're grateful that you allowed a man like Godfrey Williams to come into our lives, and we're blessed as fellow commissioners and Lord of the folks in this county. We're blessed to have a man of his character serve them. I pray in this hour you'd be with his family and you would comfort them, and I pray you'd be with us in this hour that we would do that which is wise in your sight and which would benefit the folks of this county. And I pray we'll always be so blessed as to have someone like Godfrey in our midst who would come forth and serve us, and we ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Mr. Robinson?
This evening, we are very fortunate to have Boy Scout Troop Six Oh Seven from Concord Presbyterian Church with us here tonight. In attendance, we've got Raymond Burnett, the Assistant Scout Master, Keith Owens, also Assistant Scout Master, Mel Baricci, Boy Scout Troop Committee Member, Kathy Lipsky, a Boy Scout Troop Committee Member, Sean McKinney, who's a Cub Scout Leader, and Shannon Chatham, who's also an Assistant Scout Master. In addition to that, they are led by their Senior Patrol Leader Travis Burnett, Scouts Preston Ritchie, Jonathan Ritchie, Austin Ritchie, Ryan Lipsky, Severin McKinney, Grant Chatham, and Dustin Miller. We are very honored to have y'all with us this evening, and at this time, we would ask for Life Scout Travis Burnett to come and lead us in our Pledge to the Flag.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Mashburn?
Mr. Chairman, there's only one adjustment to the agenda that I have, and that is under closed session, and that item is to be deleted. So the only adjustment, again, is to remove the item under closed session. Those are the adjustments I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Are there any additional changes or adjustments to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Then moved. Are there any questions that go into motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Our next item will be presentation of special recognition awards. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Boy Scouts have played a big part in Ardell County. The scouting program starts with Cub Scouts, WeBlows, traditional Boy Scouts, the Venture Crews, and this year is the one-hundredth anniversary of the Boy Scouts here in the United States. So we've got a resolution, and I would ask that Patrol Leader Ryan Lipsky come forward, and I will read the resolution.
And I'm going to tell you why I'm a big for this job. I'm an Assistant Scout Master of Troop One Seventy-One. My son, Ken, is an Eagle Scout. My son, Alan, is a Life Scout. Our former, the former Chair of the County Commissioners was a Scout Leader. Scouting is good for Ardell County. If you go to Snuggly Creek Park, if you go to Allison's Woods, if you go to numerous schools, you will see the results of numerous Eagle projects where scouts built picnic areas, trails, bookshelves, and libraries. The contribution that scouting makes to the community is just immense, and we are very fortunate to have scouts, have an active scouting program in Ardell County. In fact, even our own Chairman, I mean County Manager Joel Mashburn, is on the Champaign District Advisory Committee or Stairway Committee. So there's just no way to talk about Ardell County and not have it included in the scouting program. Now, the reason that we have Brian Lipsky up here is because he went to Raleigh and he represented Ardell County when the Governor read her proclamations in support of a hundred years of scouting in the state of North Carolina. So if you can do it in Raleigh, you can do it in Ardell County, okay? So here we go. This is a resolution made tribute to the Boy Scouts of America Organization, whereas the Boy Scouts of America celebrated the one-hundredth anniversary of its formation on February eighth, two thousand and ten, and whereas throughout its history, the Boy Scouts of America Organization has provided training to youth in leadership development, service to others, and civic responsibility. And whereas numerous youth in our county have participated in scouting programs throughout the years, becoming accomplished leaders both past and present, and whereas Boy Scouts have performed a variety of valuable service projects throughout our country and communities. And whereas the national study has shown that youth who participate in Boy Scouts five or more years have improved performance in reading, science, math, and physical fitness, a higher percentage of attendance at college and universities, obtained higher-paying jobs, better ethical decision-making, higher attendance at religious services with their family, and whereas the national study has also shown that adults who were in Boy Scouts as a youth have stated that scouting has had a positive influence on their lives as a youth and adult. They also learned positive character traits such as being a good team player, always being honest, taking better care of the environment, respecting life and the property of others, having pride in their country, respecting the elderly, and having confidence in their abilities. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Ardell County Board of Commissioners pays tribute to the founding of the Boy Scouts of America and honors all those both past and present who have served as scouts, leaders, and supporters. Signed, Sixteenth Day March Two Thousand and Ten, Ardell County Board of Commissioners. Your right to leave. Thank you.
Appointment before the board, we have Mr. Bill Galloway. Are you here, Mr. Galloway? You've got fifteen minutes.
My name is Bill Galloway. I have lived in Troutman for the last thirteen years. I grew up in Concord, North Carolina, joined the military, married Virginia Klodfelter, which makes me related by marriage to the Troutmans, who have a long, rich history here in Ardell County. In nineteen eighty, we bought our first house on East Mumbo Road and rented it out while I pursued my military career. I retired in nineteen ninety-seven after twenty years of service. We now live in the very same house we bought in nineteen eighty. I am an avid cyclist and enjoy long-distance bicycle touring. I also believe everyone should be active in their community, and that is why I'm here before you tonight. The purpose of this briefing is to inform you of the possible economic impacts that the Lake Norman Regional Bike Route could have on Ardell County. I plan to do this by sharing four short stories of my past long-distance bicycle tours. When we first moved here, I heard of a place in Virginia called the Virginia Creeper Trail. It is about a three-and-a-half-hour drive from here. Once you get there, you go to one of the local bike shops. You pay fifteen dollars. They put your bicycle in the back of a trailer and you inside of a fifteen-passenger van. They haul you to the top of the trailhead at White Top Mountain. From there, it is a seventeen-mile downhill ride back to where you started from. This ride takes maybe two hours, and there are plenty of places to eat along the way. The first time my son and I did this trip, we stopped at a little restaurant about ten miles down. It was just a small white house that had two plastic picnic tables in the backyard, and they served ham and cheese, sandwiches, sodas, and ice cream. A few years later, my son and I went back for our second trip. We paid our fee, took the shuttle to the top, started our seventeen-mile downhill ride back to Damascus. We stopped at the same little white house, but this time, there were nearly three dozen plastic picnic tables in the backyard, and they served a full menu. After we finished our meal, we got back on the trail and started down the trail. Along the way, I saw an elderly couple sitting in lawn chairs next to the trail with clipboards in hand. I had to stop and ask, "What's up?" They said they were taking a survey and that last year, there were over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand riders that used the Creeper Trail. Now, I spent about one hundred dollars that weekend on campsites, shuttle fees, and food, and gas. Two-hundred thousand visitors times a hundred dollars equals twenty-five million dollars that they had earned that past year. That's a chunk of change in my book. When we got back to town, I noticed that we had five bike shops and more restaurants than I care to count in the town of Damascus. And the town of Damascus is smaller than our Stony Point here in North Carolina by three hundred people. Stony Point has three hundred more people than Damascus does. On another trip in nineteen eighty, my wife and I drove to Iowa for my fiftieth birthday so I could participate in a cross-state ride. This ride has been going on for the last thirty-seven years. It's called the RagBri, which stands for the Registered Annual Great Bicycle Ride Across Iowa. One of the many traditions of the RagBri is to dip your rear wheel into the Missouri River, then seven days and nearly five hundred miles later, you dip your front wheel into the Mississippi. In nineteen eighty-three, there were only two Des Moines-Iowa Register colonists who invited a few friends along. Today, there were over ten thousand riders at this ride in two thousand and eight. The registration fee for this ride was a hundred and forty dollars. Times ten thousand participants, that equals over one million, four hundred dollars generated for the state of Iowa. And this doesn't include the cost of hotels and food that were bought by the riders while they were there. Years later, just outside of Washington, D.C., there's a place called the CNO Canal. It was built between eighteen twenty-eight and eighteen fifty. At one time, it was used to haul barges full of freight from D.C. to Cumberland, Maryland. These barges were towed by horses from a tow path and used a series of seventy-two lift locks to form forty-two ponds of water to carry the boats up the one-hundred-and-eighty-four-mile trail to Cumberland. The canal closed in nineteen twenty-four. Today, the canal is empty of most of its water, but the old stone locks are still there. The tow path is used by horseback riders, hikers, and cyclists. What makes this story interesting is just north of Cumberland, the county of Somerset, which is in Pennsylvania, invested twelve million dollars in repairing an old railroad tunnel. By doing this, they opened up another trail called the Great Allegheny Passage. This made it possible to travel from Washington, D.C. to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, a total of three hundred and twenty miles. I don't have any numbers except to say that six people, two of us from North Carolina, two of us from Ohio, and two from Canada, all converged on this place just to ride bicycles. I spent around five hundred dollars that week on this seven-day ride. A little closer to home, there's a thing called Cycle North Carolina. It is sponsored by the State of North Carolina Department of Tourism. It is an annual ride that starts in North Carolina mountains in late September and ends at the coast. This event has been going on for the last eleven years. This year will be the twelfth. Last year, almost twelve hundred riders rode into Statesville. Most made their camp at the church grounds. Some elected to stay in our local hotels. A hundred and twenty-five rooms were rented out, and Fairview Baptist Church served over seven hundred meals to raise money for their mission programs. The rest ate at the many fine restaurants we have here in Statesville. This was the third time that Cycle North Carolina has made Ardell home for their night. The interest fee for this ride is around two hundred and forty dollars for the week-long ride. This means two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars were generated just in entry fees, not including meals. Hotel revenues were collected at all the overnight host towns. This year will be my ninth year riding the CNC, and next month, I plan to ride the outer banks of North Carolina with my friends from Ohio, Canada, and North Carolina. In closing, I have told you about the Virginia Creeper Trail, the RagBri, the CNC, and Cycle North Carolina. I'm not sure how big of an impact the Lake Norman Regional Bike Route will be on Ardell County, but I'm sure it will be a positive one. I am looking forward to the day when I can load up my bike and make a two-day trip in safety around the Lake Norman Regional Bike Route. Do you gentlemen have any questions? This concludes my briefing.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
Mr. Mashburn?
Mr. Chairman, under Administrative Matters, the first item is a request from the Irle Statesville School System, Dr. Kenny Miller representing that school system.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Norman, Commissioners. As you well know, Irle Statesville Schools has embarked on developing a Career Technical Center in Troutman, and we've been working on a pay-as-you-go basis. The state has recently released second-quarter lottery proceeds for facilities, so we're asking for approval to apply for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our Career Tech Center in this round. So any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Miller, we're sure none of this money has been restricted for any other funding. I know we view some of it for some debt service.
Yes. Lottery proceeds have guidelines that we follow. Some we have paid for upfront. A lot of the work that we've done to this point, we've paid for upfront, and they will get a reimbursement through our lottery proceeds for work that has been done. So some debt service and things that we have paid for, we can get reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a request for the County Commissioners to approve application for Criminal Justice Partnership Program funding. Pam Navy, Executive Director of the APO, will make that presentation.
Greetings, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be before you, and my heart goes out to all of you for the loss of Godfrey Williams tonight. Every year, APO, and Madam Chair, if I may correct one thing, it says punishment in that, and we are now placement, appropriate placement options. Thank you. We submit a request for the state to administer a Criminal Justice Partnership Program, and the Advisory Board is under the jurisdiction of the county, and these funds run through the county. There's no match from the county on this. This is a hundred percent state funding for our services, and we would like to request that the Commissioners approve this funding again for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven fiscal year.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Then moved. Are there any questions that go into motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Thank you, Ms. Navy.
Thank you.
Tax Administrator Bill Doolittle has presented the February refunds and releases and recommends their approval.
Okay. Any questions that go into tax releases? Okay. Have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
You're no Bill Doolittle.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As have it.
Mr. Ben Garrison, Director of ICATS, will make a request for a public hearing. Mr. Garrison?
Good evening. Each year, our transportation program applies for grants to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the Community Transportation Program. We have received our FY eleven grant applications, and our requests are for both administrative and capital funding. A requirement of this application process is the governing board hold a public hearing in order to allow citizens' input into the process, and we request that a public hearing be held on Tuesday, April the sixth, at seven o'clock at this meeting. Just for information, this year, our administrative grant will contain a request for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, of which fifteen percent is local match. Capital grants will be one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, of which ten percent is local match. We do get our local match for these grants through our mileage surcharge that is added on to our shared mileage fees. Big glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Garrison? Do I have a motion for a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move we call for a public hearing to be held on April sixth, two thousand and ten.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Deputy County Manager Tracy Jackson will present the next item, which is a request to approve an agreement with Med Standard Incorporated. Mr. Jackson will explain the benefits of that agreement.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of EMS tonight. They're looking to bring this vendor onboard to basically mine patient data that they have accumulated in patient call reports to see if there are patients who are eligible for Medicaid that may be billed for services provided by EMS that perhaps may have been overlooked because of incomplete information, or perhaps the patient or the patient's family wasn't able to give them correct information in an emergency situation. This company already does this for an ambulance service in Charlotte and has had a lot of success finding folks that have Medicaid, and we hope to be able to increase EMS revenues by utilizing this service.
Any questions for Mr. Jackson?
I have one. So you're saying that it's not that we have a, that our current procedures are inadequate? It's that because of the situation at which we collect that initial round of data, which is during the immediate crisis, that information gets missed that keeps us from being able to bill everyone that we should, and that's why we have to occasionally go back and do a sweep like this?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no way to modify an existing procedure of how we do business so that we don't have to go hire these folks who then take thirty percent off the top?
It's money we're not getting anyways if we're missing it. I understand what you're saying as far as the procedures. Our folks do the best job they can getting the information in the field. Sometimes the hospitals are able to get more information after we leave the patient, and what this company will do is go back and compare different databases, match up patients' information, and kind of fill in the blanks. And, you know, a lot of times, we don't have access to that information or those databases for a lot of different reasons. So basically, they're going back and mining that data, if you will, and billing those folks where we wouldn't be able to do that.
Did we do this last year?
Not that I recall. We have an EMS billing company that actually does the billing for us. They will be working in conjunction with our billing service in order to provide this for EMS.
I'd be interested to know how it ends up.
Well, just, I mean, as an example, Medic, the ambulance service in Charlotte, of course, they run a lot more calls than we do here in Ardell County, but they're hoping to recover about nine hundred thousand dollars in a year's time. You know, we run maybe fifteen thousand calls a year. They probably run eighty thousand plus in Charlotte, so.
Okay.
Just as a point of reference.
Mr. Jackson, and going over the explanation on this before, did you not also say that many times when we first submit a claim, a person may not show up as being eligible for Medicaid but later becomes eligible for Medicaid, and that we can go back if we have the correct information, go back and pull that down as well?
Right, and that's a good point. They can bill backwards twelve months for somebody that maybe at that previous point in time was not eligible but then became eligible later. So that's another benefit of this program.
But they can, they can collect money, you said retroactively twelve months?
Yes.
And we pay them nothing unless they collect, and when they do, we pay them thirty percent.
That's correct.
Any additional questions for Mr. Jackson? Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Are we entertaining motion this time?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve this request.
Okay. Any questions that go into motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Mr. Mashburn, if we're going further, I need to go back to number three. We need the motion on that, the school fund.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Norman, I'll make that request to approve, the request from Ardell Statesville School System to apply for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in public school-building capital funds, otherwise known as the lottery distribution, to be used for the Career Technical Medical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. You heard the motion? Are there any questions around that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Okay, Mr. Mashburn, thank you.
Okay, the next item is a request to endorse the Lake Norman Bike Route and Plan. This was carried over from a previous meeting. I'm not sure if you want additional presentation on that, but, Mr. Smith?
Excuse me. I don't necessarily have anything that I need to add. However, there were some questions at the last meeting and some concerns that Bjorn Hansen, who made the presentation at the last meeting, may be able to answer for you if you would like to hear them. And also, Jeff Archer is here as well to address some economic impacts, but obviously, that's up to you all if you'd like to hear either of those gentlemen speak.
Jeff, Mr. Archer, go ahead.
Well, I believe Mr. Archer has some information as to how this would be funded as far as revenue stream. In the previous meeting, I asked how was it to be funded and what was the revenue stream, and at that time, we were led to believe there wasn't one. Well, if there is one, that'll impact the decision of this board, at least in my mind.
I think I had prepared some just economic benefits. If that's of interest, that would be great. Mr. Hansen also has the things more for the funding, so if you'd prefer to hear the funding, that would be more Mr. Hansen.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, my name is Jeff Archer. I'm the owner of First Flight Bicycles in downtown Statesville and also resident of Mooresville, and I just had a few economic impact numbers to share with you guys. Few of those, you know, with the world's facing skyrocketing obesity rates, escalating traffic congestion, and concerns of global climate change, the bicycle is an underutilized solution. For instance, the U.S. could save four hundred and sixty-two million gallons of gasoline just by increasing from one percent to one and a half percent cycling trips. In two thousand and three, cars idling wasted over five billion, with a B, gallons of fuel. One I found particularly interesting, especially this is kind of my era, in nineteen sixty-four, fifty percent of the children rode their bicycles to school, and our obesity rate was twelve percent. In two thousand and four, we were down to three percent. In 2004, we were down to 3% bicycle riders, obesity rate was 45%. Between 1960 and today, the average weight of a 6- to 11-year-old has increased by 11 pounds. 60% of our pollution of automobile emissions happens in the first few minutes of operation, while 24% of our trips are within a mile of home, 40% of trips within two miles, and 50% of us live within five miles of where we work. One interesting thing, just the increase, Google just added a bike there directions this week, so you can go into Google now and instead of doing automobile directions, you can pull down a menu that says bike there. It will actually give you bike directions. A few examples from around the country to illustrate the economic impact of similar trail systems. Downtown area of Dunedin, Florida was suffering 35% storefront vacancies in the '90s. When the Pinellas Trail was put into town, the storefront occupancy was 100%. The 235-mile Katy Trail, which is in Missouri, goes through nine counties and 35 towns. These communities, many of them were in economic decline, were initially very much opposed to this trail. When the first sections opened, sentiments changed. Visitors were flocking to the new trail, proved to be responsible, likable guests who needed goods and services in these towns. Closer to home, the NCDOT commissioned a 2003 study to examine the value of the public investment bicycle facilities in Outer Banks in North Carolina. That study concluded that bicycling activities in the area resulted in an estimated $60 million annually in economic benefits. 1,400 jobs, which we all need these days, were created or supported annually. There's also the increase in less quantifiable benefits, including property values raising along the bike paths, reduced healthcare costs, which is, you know, obviously another big topic recently. Less damaged roads resulting from wider paved shoulders provides benefits to all road users by reducing congestion and reduced parking congestion as well. To bring it back into kind of more the local level, the Iredell County Parks and Rec did a survey in 2008, in October. It was Clark and Chase Research administered a survey through 600 telephone interviews of Iredell County residents. Directly from that report, it said the importance of bikeways was expressed in every public input venue undertaken as part of this planning report. The county should encourage the state to include bike lanes whenever roadway improvements are made or new roads constructed. There is very strong interest among Iredell County adults to establish greenways and open space. 89% of those surveys said they would like to see more greenways, and 86% said that open space was needed. The study concluded that development of this plan and implementation of the initial phases of the greenway system should be one of Iredell County's highest park improvement priorities. That was just kind of a few things, just from the national level on down to the local level, and then I'll let Bjorn answer hopefully some of your questions about the funding. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bjorn Hansen. I'm a transportation planner for the Central Atlantic Council of Governments. I want to thank you for inviting me back, zooming in on the map for Iredell County to answer specific questions about funding. Brought back some numbers in terms of specific costs for the range of different types of projects that would be recommended specifically within Iredell County. The projects range from signage, which have no cost to Iredell County, they'd be provided by the NCDOT, to paved shoulders, which would typically be installed as a part of a resurfacing project. The NCDOT has a resurfacing fund, and that money cannot be flexed to add the paved shoulders. The strategy is that they would offer that to municipalities and counties when they have word that a certain segment of road is going to be widened and they're, or not widened, but resurfaced, and they're aware that it is on an identified bicycle route, they'll do their recon, and if the shoulder is appropriate, that it's not going to require grading or any kind of drainage work, they will communicate with the locals to offer them the opportunity to help implement that. The marginal cost to resurface a road, it's about $200,000 a mile, the marginal cost to add the paved shoulders, or bicycle lanes is anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 extra, and that's per mile. And then going up to multipurpose paths, which within the county, there's only a short section identified near the state park, otherwise you see a lot of that in the other counties where they've done their Carolina Thread Trail process. Those projects are typically on the order of $1 million a mile, and that's where you're on either a water or sewer alignment, or some other type of utility easement where you don't have to acquire property. So, those are the ranges of costs. Now, in terms of how they would get implemented, it depends on what type of road you're on. Something like Brawley School Road, where you're having bicycle lanes installed, that was done as a part of the traditional NCDOT TIP project process. Down here, NC 115, where they had paved shoulders put in earlier this past decade, that was done through a one-time program, NC moving ahead, safety program funds, no cost to the locals. Another example is C-MAC funds, which portion of Iredell County is eligible for. Those monies are either 80% federal, or occasionally they're 100% federal. That was the case for Mooresville this past year, where they're building a park and ride lot for their express bus service and doing an intersection project at Talbert and 150. They were able to get those dollars 100% federal. So, those are examples where there was no cost to the locals, except in project administration for staff. So, it really depends. Another example is Williamson Road, which is identified as a TIP project going from I-77 up to, actually up to 150. And because this would be on a bicycle plan recommending paved shoulders, when that road is widened, those paved shoulders would be put in as a part of the project. So, it really depends on what type of project and what section of road you're talking about, on what would be the cost and the likely funding source. I know that in the past month, in fact, more than the past month, there's been quite a bit of discussion regarding the shifting responsibility of secondary roads to counties and the maintenance of that, and that's been, the DOT has said, "We're not the one that's initiating it. It's a legislative issue through the General Assembly." They do have pot of money for maintenance, and that is specifically for maintenance, and we have spoken with, directly with, the Division Engineer, Mike Holder, and he's completely aware of this plan. He's, we're also completely aware that maintenance funds are maintenance funds, and they will not be flexed to provide enhancement improvements, though there are specific pots of money for enhancing road projects with things like paved shoulders, bicycle lanes, or sidewalks or greenways. So, that's the information that I'm able to provide in terms of costs. There is no direct cost to the county, there's no obligation or expectation that you implement any of this. It's hoped that as a part of a wide menu of strategies that you would support this, but at the end of the day, there's no requirement. So, try and answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, so, let me just make sure we've got that right. So, the bike trails would be added as roads were either resurfaced or widened for other reasons? Is that correct? I mean, the.
Those are two, those are two strategies, yeah.
Those are two strategies, and when they are, they would be used from a pot of money that the state has for this specific purpose. So, it's not that Iredell County, if the, if the state's going to repave Williamson Road, that Iredell County doesn't then turn around and have to pay money to add a bike path? That's something that the state would do?
Certainly, you certainly have that, you certainly have the ability to provide Iredell County money, but there have, there have been instances, I know when I worked for York County, we had an instance where we were able to get an enhancement grant and provide four-foot paved shoulders on a road as a part of a road resurfacing project. We were able to do that, but oftentimes, as staff can attest, the schedules don't line up. You know, they may, DOT often only knows a few months in advance they're going to repave the road, and the enhancement grant process is not that timely. So, that is an option for getting grants to provide that marginal increase, but it's not always going to be available. And then obviously, some of the other communities like Mooresville and the three towns in Mecklenburg County have improvements as a byproduct of the development process. They'll have it widened out to a typical, you know, their preferred cross-section. If it's a rural two-lane road and it's, the area's suburbanizing, they will require that it be built out with a extra asphalt, curb and gutter sidewalk and all of that, and that's along the frontage of the property. Iredell County does not have to do that, that's just a strategy that's listed as possible.
But municipalities get Powell tax money from gasoline. Can they use that for construction on a project like this?
Yes, sir, they can. On their, on their roads, they can make improvements.
You know, we don't get Powell tax money.
Yes, sir. We don't maintain roads.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm the one responsible for everybody having to make a second trip up here, so I'll, I have a couple of amendments to this resolution. I don't know how well they'll be received, but to be perfectly honest with you, some of the news I receive out of Raleigh is not too well received on my behalf sometime, because in the initial presentation of this project, I was, 48 to 72 hours prior to that, we'd been sitting in meetings talking about how the state wasn't going to fund our schools and how state tax revenues were down here, so they were shifting expenses of this county and I'll say, I'll be polite to the people in Raleigh and say that the people in the legislature are grossly incompetent. That's about the nicest thing I can say about them. I'm sorry, but that's just the way I see it. I don't mean any criticism of Mr. Holder. I've met Mr. Holder, I've dealt with him on numerous projects. I think he's a highly professional person. I think he's well qualified to the job, and I do not mean any criticism toward any of the employees of the DOT, but the fact of, and what calls me consternation is we have to pay bills that the state should be paying, or said they would pay and then don't pay, and then we're presented with a project like this when you ask someone where the revenue stream is, and they give you one of these, I'm saying, "Well, here we go again. That bunch of idiots over in Raleigh have come up with a great idea, no idea how they're going to pay for it." And I displayed some anger, and I'm not going to apologize for that. I thought that was, as humbly as I know how to say it, I thought that was righteous indignation. I think they, I think a lot of other people need to be angry about the way those folks handle money. If you don't believe me, just file for your state income tax return, see how long it takes you get it, because those fools are broke. So, having said that, to make sure that everybody understands, I'm not necessarily opposed to a bike trail, but I am opposed to the expenditure of money without diligent stewardship as to how it's going to be paid for. I can support the resolution as presented with a couple of additions. And I would like those, these two additions inserted after the fifth paragraph, and they'll read as follows. Whereas public confidence in the equitable and timely funding of highway projects has been seriously damaged, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners respectfully requests that no revenues be diverted from any existing Iredell County transportation improvement plans toward the construction of this bicycle plan. And whereas the Iredell County Board of Commissioners have an abiding concern for personal property, the use of personal property from the construction of this project should result in the just compensation of the owner. If the board can agree to those two additions of this resolution, I will vote in the affirmative.
Mr. Johnson, those are two you're going to add, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any additional questions or additions? Okay. Then ready to receive a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I may offer a motion that we approve this resolution with the two amendments or additions that I've offered.
Okay. Any additional questions, concerns? Okay. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is, again, a matter that was tabled from a previous meeting, and that has to do with zoning amendment pertaining to Exit 42 roadway protection overlay.
Okay.
Thank you.
This, this item has been tabled a few times, actually, and after long last, we've got it here tonight, and I won't go through the entire amendment unless you would like me to do so, but just to refresh your memories on it, this is an RPO, roadway protection overlay, for an area around Exit 42 along US 21. This is an area that had before, the recession was growing very, very quickly, new businesses or new inquiries pretty much every day, and was generally meant to be used as something of a stopgap measure to protect property and protect the integrity of the area until the town of Troutman, which provides water and sewer, moves further into this area and governs the new development. The town of Troutman has a unified development ordinance that has fairly stringent standards, which we used as a model to come up with this proposed RPO. During the development of the RPO, we held a public input session. We have gone through the planning board, and in a roundabout way, came back to the public and had another unveiling, so to speak, of what had been presented to the county commissioners. We've worked with a group of property owners along the corridor, had several meetings, went back and forth on many different changes. We could not come to consensus, however, I do think we came to a good middle ground in this proposal, and I would recommend its approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have concerning the specifics or the process.
I've, I've got one. First of all, I appreciate you working with, with the property owners. Mr. Howard Bryan contacted my, me, contacted other members of the board, and it appears, based upon some of the recommendations or some of the revisions that you've made, that meeting with him and meeting with some of the other property owners, we probably have a whole lot better overlay plan than maybe to begin with. There was one additional question when I spoke to him today that he had, and it concerned that there's a lot of references to the right-of-way, and that there are certain setbacks that have to be done from the right-of-way, and his concern was that we don't know what the width of that right-of-way is, and that it doesn't appear on the plans. Can you, can you elaborate or explain, or, you know, is it a rational concern, or is it one that we've got a solution for?
Well, I think we have a solution for it. Luckily, Iredell County and the town of Troutman both have recent comprehensive transportation plans, and in those two plans, the right-of-way for this corridor, as well as any other that is proposed to be improved in the county or in the town, is prescribed very specifically. And for instance, in this area, in this area, there is a fluctuation of the proposed right-of-way. However, the documents, and admittedly, you have to piece them together because the state did two separate documents, but they are prescribed down to the 10th of a mile, if I'm not mistaken. So, it tells you exactly where the proposed right-of-way would be, and the width and the proposed cross-section, so it's very detailed.
One of the things that we had sought was for this to be compatible with the town of Troutman. How involved have they been in this process, or have they been involved at all?
They've been very involved and very appreciative of their help. It's made the process a lot easier for us. It's made the process a lot easier for us.
Okay. And the, and the reason that you had them involved was because we really anticipate that the town will annex eventually a lot of that property?
I, I would expect that, yes. You know, we've got a new Lowe's, a proposed Walmart and all the offshoot development that will eventually come. Uh, and because the county's not in the water and sewer business, uh, we, we cannot accommodate it.
Any additional questions? Go ahead, Mr. Keith.
Go ahead.
Well, Troutman's probably been a little more involved in this thing than they cared to be from the outset, so. Let me say this, 'cause I told Ms. Smith on the phone, I said, sometimes I run my big mouth and it causes people a whole lot more trouble than I ever envisioned it would. But since I was the guy who came up with the RPO idea, let, let me say that I do appreciate the participation of Troutman and I do appreciate the particip- participation of Mr. Bryant. And what I envisioned, we would come up with an RPO, thinking at that time as rapidly as development was occurring along that corridor, that it would not be long before Troutman would re-get request for annexation for the water and sewer and they would, they would skip over a property and run water and sewer past that property. And then it would really be in their best interest to ask for ETJ at that time, so you wouldn't have a hodgepodge of development. And I felt like that was gonna be a while in happening, so the best thing we could do is create a roadway protection plan for the interim. But I never really anticipated for it to be this drawn out and for that I apologize. I do think, I'm gonna speak honestly, I do think that Mr. Bryan had some legitimate concerns when he came in. I think the right-in, right-out driveways and so forth and the curb cuts, I think will give, will enhance people's access to their own property and not dramatically impede the flow of traffic. The, the problem I have and the reason I finally decided to support Mr. Smith in, in his different setbacks is because in, in parcels further away from the interstate, some of those parcels are not especially deep. And if we go with a uniform right-of-way all the way down that corridor, it seriously diminishes the utility of some of those parcels of property. Now, that may prove to be wise or unwise, but I, I just, I'm just a firm believer in personal property rights. If somebody's gonna lose the use of their property, they should be compensated for it unless they receive some benefit. Understanding that at some point Troutman may come and ask for a setback to be in align with their land use plan, but the owner's being compensated in some other way. They're getting water or sewer or some service that Troutman offers, so they're getting something for the additional use of their plan. And they've gotta do what's in the best interest to protect their investment, and I don't have a problem with Troutman doing that. So I, I find myself at the end of it all, and Ms. Smith, thank you for your good work. I think this is probably the third addition of the, the story of exit forty-two, according to Mr. Smith, and I think you, you did a fine work. And, and thank, uh, Mr. Salibi and his staff and the mayor and his board for, for their patience in working through this.
Mr. Keith.
Yes, sir.
Is, is this different from Troutman's requirements in, in any way? And if so, in what ways?
There, there are some differences, um.
And I'm, I'm familiar with assigned differences. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you can leave that a lot, leave that aside.
I would say one of the primary differences would be, and, and if I speak out of turn, luckily, I've got some Troutman people here. Uh, one of the major issues would be the three hundred, they, the town of Troutman has a uniform three-hundred-foot separation between all driveways. Whereas we're a little softer on that, allowing, um, some, a lesser linear footage for right-in, right-out driveways. As you mentioned, the signs, um, really, there, there aren't any huge differences other than that for the reason we went into this, which was access management and preservation of the right-of-way. Uh, the town also works to preserve the right-of-way also and, um, you know, generally is trying to keep as much traffic off of the road and interior to a project or to a parcel as possible.
Mr. Robertson had mentioned the, the, the question in, uh, in Mr. Bryan's mind about, you know, where, where the setbacks are at different places along, um, the, uh, the roadway protection overlay. And Mr. Bryan called me and was expressing the same concern and said that some of the, he felt like some of the property owners didn't know where that was gonna be. And you said that that's actually not true, that we do know where, where it is. Can we produce a map then to, that, that they can refer to or that we commissioners could refer to?
Yeah, that, that's an excellent question. We can, we can. And the way that DOT does these studies is they'll give a pretty broad map, uh, which, you know, picks a, an entire, look at the entire county and just puts a heavy line where there's gonna be an, an improvement. But they'll pick landmarks, um, to describe that area. Getting back to that Carr Branch example, they'll say from the creek or Carr Branch going north a mile and three-quarters, the right-of-way will be this. But we can do, we could do that on, from a staff perspective. We could put a map together that would show that for either exit forty-two or, or any other road in the, in the county with a little more detail.
So that, so then they would know exactly where that, where that thing was at this point in time?
Yeah, they, they could actually see it, whereas right now they've gotta read to find it.
And it, and it wouldn't be changeable?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. Well, that, that was a huge concern, I think, so that, that, that makes me feel better about the whole thing. In, in terms of the, the three hundred feet between driveways, DOT also controls all the curb cuts. Is that, is that correct? Is it, is there a reason why we need to add another layer of regulation past what the engineers at DOT have to say about this?
Well, that, that's a question that's come up several times. And in, in talking to DOT, they, they're, they feel they're not going to deny access, not that this, not that this would. This compels us to work a little harder with the property owners to, to try to get them to share, uh, and to try and keep the, the separation. DOT issues driveway permits, which controls the curb cuts. However, their separations aren't quite as, as, uh, as lengthy, so to speak. And they'll give more typically than we would allow. And we just felt that even though they do control it, we would take one level higher to just try to ensure that there's the least amount of stops and starts on that road as possible. So this is one more layer that would make it more restrictive.
Again, the, the main, my main purpose, when Troutman came to us and asked us for satellite annexation and if we would allow them to approach the legislature. I met with Mr. Salibi, I believe Mr. Williams was with him at that time, and the mayor, and I said, I would not have a problem with it if you folks would engage with us on RPO, because I did not want to happen at exit forty-five what happened at exit thirty-six. And that was the main reason. I think this roadway protection plan will accomplish most of that. But we need to keep in mind that ninety percent or better of the development is gonna happen under Troutman's zoning ordinance because they control the water and the sewer unless someone has a re, what is a resonance now, and they wanna put an accounting place in it and they don't want the mayor's water and sewer. And, but at some point, that property would become probably too valuable for that use and, and someone will sell it. The other concern I had was when, and I, and I addressed that previously, was the sign ordinance, because I, I do feel that sometime you can regulate signs to the point that it makes it difficult for people to, uh, market their business. But they opened up their sign ordinance and let me look at it, and it was, quite frankly, it was better than I imagined. And it gives people ample opportunity on the roadway to market their business, so people can find that place of business and conduct commerce. And they even have a provision that would work pretty much like our board of adjustment, that if you didn't agree with that, you could appeal it, and I believe the town board decides. And then I'm, so, I, I, I think their sign ordinance is well thought out.
Additional questions?
Now, Mr. Chairman, could I suggest, uh, just the possibility of, of an amendment to the, uh, the amendment, the zoning amendment, I guess is what we're, we're talking about here, is the name of it.
It's an overlay.
An overlay, an amendment to the overlay. Um, that we produce a map so that people can easily and graphically understand, uh, what the law is.
Okay, Mr. Smith always said he can do that, right?
We, we can do that. And, and I will mention, just because from, from when we started to now, this is only officially the first step. We've, we've got to adopt this on the map, which we'll come back to you, you know, at your, at, at the next meeting that we can get it all done. So we'll have a graphic, a graphic representation, um, that will show the zoning overlay, but we'll also per, um, put together a map showing the right-of-ways as well, the right-of-way width.
Okay. Good. Any additional questions or concerns?
I make one more statement. I believe this is the precursor at some point to having a serious discussion about what area Troutman will need for ETJ to manage development. And at some point, I mean, we got a lot on the plate right now with Mr. Williams gone, and we got some other matters we need to deal to. At some point, we need to sit down with those folks and have a serious discussion about what they thinks in their best interest, what we thinks in our best interest and how we can work together to ma- maximize the opportunities at that interchange.
Mr. Smith, from this point forward, you need a motion to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll, uh, well, Scott, since you've, you've got the amendment, you wanna make the motion and include your amendment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we, uh.
Or you want me to make the motion and then you can make an amendment?
It's okay, no, I'll, I'll just, uh, I don't know how you, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning amendment pertaining to the exit forty-two roadway protection overlay as amended to produce a, a map.
Okay, you've heard the motion for the amendment. Are any questions? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Okay, now we need a motion.
Oh, uh.
Yeah, I was just.
Motion to approve as amended then.
Okay, motion to approve as amended, amendment, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last item under administrative matters, um, at the last meeting, a proposed, um, calendar was presented for the budget review and approval process. And, um, I, I know there's been, um, some, uh, suggested changes on that since it was presented to you. So I'm, I'm just requesting that you consider this and, um, uh, if you're prepared to go ahead and approve, um, the, um, the, the calendar with whatever changes, uh, you feel are warranted or necessary.
Wait, wait, what are we on? Number ten?
Did I miss one?
Ten.
I'm sorry? Did I miss one? What amendment are we on? I mean, what memo are we on?
Number ten.
Okay. All right. All right. Yeah, if, so we're just gonna have one meeting in May?
That's fine with me, since we'd already changed it anyway.
Okay.
Changed the schedule anyway, I wouldn't, I don't see a problem with changing the meeting schedule since we'd already.
Okay, the eleventh of May works. The eleventh was good or the twenty-fifth was good?
I don't have a preference for a date.
Okay, well, eleventh of May works just fine.
If that's agreeable, anybody?
Or the twenty-fifth?
I prefer the eleven.
Eleventh it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the commissioner meeting, the board meeting will be May the eleventh, is what you're saying. Now, suggested in the, um, budget calendar, uh, were work sessions on May the twentieth, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh. Are there any changes to that?
Okay, I'm, I missed that, I'm sorry. Where's that?
The fifth, twentieth and, twentieth and twenty-seventh.
We've got June eighth and ten if needed, so that'll be adequate.
Hold on one second. I, I missed that.
While he's looking, uh, at his calendar, let, let me state that, um, normally we have always presented the proposed budget at the mid-monthly meeting, which would have been the eighteenth. I'm not positive that we can have everything ready by the eleventh. We will make every attempt to do that.
Twenty-fifth is fine. I just arbitrarily said that almost, so twenty-fifth is fine. Just make it the twenty-fifth. Makes more sense anyway.
Let's go and lock out one budget work session.
Doubt we're gonna need it.
What do you think, Mr. Keith?
Well, I, I was just gonna, that, there is no requirement that it actually be presented at a board meeting, so I was just gonna get it to you as quick as possible after the eleventh. And if you do go ahead with the, um, budget work sessions on the twentieth, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh, then you will definitely have it prior to those dates.
Okay.
But it may not be ready by the eleventh.
That's fine.
Okay. Can you get questions?
We're good. Twentieth, twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh right now appear to be okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to be accepted these days?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Well, what did, wait a minute, what did we vote on for sure? Were we eleventh or twenty-fifth?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Okay, uh, and then we got the twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh and twentieth work sessions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I appreciate y'all being understanding about the schedule.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, motion accepted minutes for the January, January twenty-first and March second meetings?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, been moved. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Announcement of exit, they're carrying on boards and commission. Uh, historic properties commission, six announcements. Appointments to boards and commission. Rec advisory board commission, one board, one member. And, do we have anybody?
I'll come back to you. There was somebody who approached me about being on the rec advisory board.
Okay. And my grievance committee, one announcement? Take one for that board.
That's an appointment, isn't it? Yeah, I nominate Mr. Grant Mueller.
Mr. Grant Miller been nominated. Any additional nominees? All in favor of Mr. Grant Mueller, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Lieutenant home advisory board, one announcement?
I nominate Sharon Mueller. Paulier, excuse me.
Okay, Mr. Paulier? Any additional nominees? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. Okay. Unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll address that if I may.
Okay.
We, uh, you know, we adopted the air quality resolution that was, we talked about when our joint meeting with Mooreville and the mayor was kind enough to send that to us. And I wanted to make sure I understood that our intent was to send that out to all the other municipalities in the county for their approval?
We didn't send it to all the others.
Okay, well, that.
Sent back to Mooreville.
Okay, what I would like for us to do then, that was my intention, maybe I didn't make it clear. If we would send that resolution to, to the municipalities in the county and ask them to adopt it, so that we could. ask them to adopt it so that we could, we could collect the adopted resolution and send it to our congressional delegation, that's, that's what I would like to do. In addition to those folks, I would like it sent to the Farm Bureau and the Farm Preservation Board for their adoption. And ask those folks to return it to us and-
You wanna do that in the form of a motion, which is-
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I back us up to this, uh, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council that was, we had five appointments tabled back in July, almost a year ago. Is, uh, and I guess I'm just asking the board, is there something we need to be doing to get this done? Or, uh, there's five appointments that have been vacant for an awful long time. Is it necessary that we get these appointments made or are they doing fine without them? Or?
I'll just have, I'll just have to refer to Ms. Moore.
Typically, they, uh, recommend someone for group appointments, individuals under 18. Uh, as far as the others, the chief district judge, they're supposed to either attend or designate someone. And we haven't heard back in, in that respect. Now, the member of the business community, you could nominate someone there.
Do you have someone in mind?
No, sir, I didn't. I just was, you know, it just seemed like something, could we, you know, direct staff to, I guess, look into this and either, you know, make some kind of recommendation one way or another about what to do about this because it-
The others, others are high school students, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you are meeting and-
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd have the same concern about the Statesville Board of Adjustment, ETJ, that's been vacant since, uh, May 19th. Uh, again, if, if there's something that one of us needs to be doing.
That's a pretty small pool to fish out of.
Well, I understand, I just-
And I, I bet, I bet I asked 25 people. And that's about everybody that lives in the ETJ.
Okay, well.
Do you wanna search that one out, Scott?
Well, I-
Would be glad to have it.
I do, no, I understand. I, I mean, I'd do the best I can, but I don't live up that way. And I'm, I just, I just wanted to bring it up and see if there's anything we can do.
I ask a lot of people. In fact, Phil Collins over at the city actually got me a list of all the residents and I, everybody I could catch at home. They treated me pretty much like a telemarketer when I called them, but I called them.
Go back and let's keep, any of these you have, anybody have in mind, we'd be glad to have one. A public comment period. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? What clock we do have? Okay.
You got new business or me?
And new business.
I'll be honest with you, I've been busy all about it.
You do have?
Me or Mr. Johnson does. I guess it's me.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really know enough about it to speak intelligently.
Well, I don't believe I do either, but I, uh, my question for the board and, and I, and I guess my motion would be, uh, and just to give you some background, Senator Skip Stam has recently been corresponding with, um, I guess, all the county commissions with regard to, uh, whether we're paying for abortions with public money. Uh, and he, matter of fact, the most recent communication suggested that, uh, he was gonna bring suit against some counties for something. And I, and I didn't get much more than the headline, so I don't know what the suit is or, or what he's alleging. But in light of that, uh, I would like to ask the staff to look into the situation and give us a report at the next meeting so we know what we're dealing with. Without objection from the board.
This was part of the, our insurance pool, the way I read that thing. Is that right?
Best I can tell, that because we're with NCACC, that he thinks all the NCACC plans are, uh, maybe paying for abortions. Now, I don't know if we are or we aren't. Personally, you probably know, I don't think we should.
Mr. Smith, you can get back with us on that, can't you?
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
County manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to add tonight.
Okay. And did you say we don't have a-
That's correct, we-
No closed session?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, then I have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Sherman.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.